That are going on, obviously, there is June 22nd, the P G and Fire Department at the Cal Fire Station, or the Middle South Lake County Fire Station on 175, that starts from 10 to 2. And then also, just made aware of there's a funeral, so it's gonna be happening early in the morning, that morning. And then in the afternoon, I will be attending the services for Mr. Phil Bayless, who will be on our memoir. Saturday, or Sunday, don't have anything. Monday, we'll hopefully be golfing, that is my birthday, so I plan on golfing on that day, if it all works out here in Lake County somewhere. And then Tuesday, back here for the board meeting.
Supervisor Brown?
Yeah. So I will be meeting with a couple of constituents from Riviera West this afternoon, depending upon when we get done, regarding some abatement issues up there. It actually pertains to the discussion about hazardous vegetation ordinance as well. And then tomorrow, I have a meeting with Fire Chief in Kelseyville and some other constituents regarding the same thing. And then a meeting with representatives of the Wine Grape Commission. Thursday, I have a meeting with some constituents at Lock Loman regarding hazardous vegetation removal. And then, don't really have anything else scheduled for the rest of the week, back on the office on Monday.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, so after the meeting today, the board meeting, I'd probably go over some things with Anita about the ad hoc committee for the Lake Pillsbury and the Scott Dam situation. I went to the meeting this week, or actually, I attended it via conference call for the ad hoc, Huffman Ad hoc Committee meeting. So there's some things we gotta discuss about that. Tomorrow, Worth, the Worth Committee meeting, Town Council in Upper Lake. Then Thursday, the La Cern Town Hall in, at the Senior Center, the La Cern and Alpine Senior Center. Workforce Alliance on Friday, and then probably go hang out with my mother, because it's her birthday that day, and I'll be in trouble if I don't do that. And then I'll be attending a funeral for a tribal elder out of Elam, Raymond Brown. He was, used to be the chairman for that Elam tribe at one time, so I'll be attending his funeral. And then Monday, I'll have my meeting, well, usually I have a meeting with the C A O, but maybe Susan and I can meet that day, and then be back here on Tuesday for the Board Supervisors meeting.
Okay, after the meeting today, I have a gender review, and then I'll be attending the City Council meeting in Lakeport. Tomorrow, I have a meeting, or I'll be in the office in the morning, and then a meeting with Hope Rising, an A T T representative, to discuss what they can do to help with Hope Rising. At 2 o'clock, I'll be at the Hope Rising Workshop down for Hope Center, and then attending, the Chamber Dinner at the airport on Wednesday, that night, at 5 o'clock. Thursday, I'll be in the office in the morning, and then attending the Juvenile Justice Commission meeting at noon. And then I will be at the C T A Social that evening in Clear Lake Friday. I will be at a planning session for Hope Rising from 9 to 3. And then I believe at 4 o'clock, we're gonna be recognizing new hires here for the Sheriff's Department. On Saturday, I will be at the Hike for Hospice in the morning. I will attend the Positive Party at Red Bud in the afternoon, and then Mr. Lake County is Saturday afternoon. And then in the office Monday morning, and then the Scotts Valley Community Forum meeting is at 5 o'clock that evening.
Oh, and denim and diamonds?
Denim and diamonds, yes, it's Saturday, and I was approached this last weekend, and they said,
I told you about it, but yeah.
I'm making a cake, so I'm working on making a cake for that, too, somewhere in my calendar. So we'll get that there. Okay, we can go back to our agenda, our public input. We have one, Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director, recognizing Todd Mancell.
Good morning, Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director. Appreciate the opportunity. We have an individual in our department that is going to be retiring at the end of the month, and I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize him in front of the board and the public. I'd like to introduce Todd Mancell, he doesn't want to come up here, but he is sitting in, in the audience back here with, with many members of the Public Works Department. Todd graduated from Chico State in 1985 with a degree in industrial technology, and he started his work, or his career with the county as a construction inspector for the sewage collection system in Clear Lake in April of 1986. He was brought on as extra help engineering technician two in August of 1987, and that position became permanent in November of 1987. Coincidentally, that was the same time that I joined the County Public Works Department in my first stint with the department. So Todd and I came on board at the same time in November of 1987. He and I were construction inspectors, and there were a couple of summers where he and I traveled all over the county inspecting projects and had a lot of fun together. He was promoted to Assistant Civil Engineer in June of 1990, reclassified to Junior Engineer in March of 1991, reclassified again to Special Projects Engineer in June of 98, and reclassified again to Special Projects Engineer Two in June of 2015. Some of Todd's accomplishments in beginning of his career, he achieved Caltrans certification for materials testing. He performed quite a bit of materials testing during our construction projects in the lab and out in the field. He performed construction inspection on many notable projects, including Soda Bay Water, Nissasurn Cut Off realignment, Upper Lake Sewer, North Lake Port Water, countywide fiber optic installation, and the aforementioned sewage collection system in Clear Lake. Todd was nominated and won one of the awards in 1993 for Outstanding Employee with the County. Todd kind of moved into traffic engineering, has done that very well, and has basically handled the county's, or our department's, traffic engineering program for the last many years. He worked with our accident database, helped develop that. It's kind of interesting, we have the receipt from the very first computer that the Department of Public Works put into, into operation in 1988, and that computer was used for the tracking of traffic accidents.
So, so I can top that, you have the receipt, I have that computer. That's the one, that's the one they have on my desk, so yeah.
Well, it's, just speaks to the, the efficiency and frugality of the county, yes. Todd's developed our pavement management system, and he continues to operate that system today. He oversaw the updating of our county standards. He's represented our department at the Area Planning Council and the Traffic Advisory Committee. And he's been responsible in, for both construction inspection and through the grant, grant application process. There's countless number of projects that have been built in Lake County as a result of successful grant applications from the information that he compiles and maintains. We're talking millions and millions, multiple millions of dollars worth of construction that, that he has been responsible for during his career. One of the interesting things, and we just talked about it, his career spans the engineering field from the days that we used to do things by hand. He was a draftsman early in his career, and to the full computerization of engineering tasks. He's a product of our local schools, he graduated from Clear Lake High School, and he's worked his entire career doing whatever was needed, without a lot of attention or fanfare. And at his request, his retirement is kind of following suit. Not a whole lot of fanfare, but an amazing, an amazing employee, an amazing man, and he's certainly gonna be missed in our department. And so I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to recognize Todd Mancell for 32 years of service with the County of Lake.
Thank you, Scott.
Todd, you don't want to say anything. Ah, come on.
I didn't fill out a card.
You're gonna be able to write on mine.
It was pre-printed already.
I didn't fill out a card either, but I'm gonna say something. This is, this is amazing that, you know, we don't see this very often, where we have somebody who's made their entire career as a county employee. And we all know, especially those of us that are in county employment, know that somebody doesn't do this for the money. They do it because they, they really do care about the county and making a difference. Todd, I've known Todd since we were just little kids. My mom was, was his mom's aide in, in school back in the 70s. So we've been friends, our families have been friends for as long as I can remember. And I've always had a tremendous amount of respect for Todd, and the way he puts his head down and just does his job. You don't see him down here, you don't see him, you know, in the paper, you don't see him, you know, getting, getting all this fanfare or anything like that. But he's, he's one of those people that has led by example. The younger folks that come in, and now they're, you know, now they're older, now they've been there for a while, but they started working with Todd, and that was the direction that they went by seeing Todd as their example. The first guy here, last guy to leave, never, never complaining that I've ever heard. And certainly no complaints about him. So I just, I have a great deal of respect for Todd and everything that he's done on behalf of the county because of his love of the county.
Thank you. Okay, 6.2, our 9:08 a.m. item, Presentation and Proclamation Declaring June 18th, 2019 as Wildfire Preparedness Day in honor of Phil Bayless.
Good morning. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation, declaring June 18th, 2019 as Wildfire Preparedness Day in honor of Phil Bayless. Whereas on this day, June 18th, 2019, Wildfire Preparedness Day, we recognize the residents in our communities and neighborhoods in the County of Lake, California, who engage in mitigation activities on this day as they work together with courageous first responders, legislators, teachers, youth, and others to create communities that are more resilient and safer from loss due to wildfires. And whereas, let us recognize that each of us can do our part to prepare for wildfire emergencies by taking steps to make effective changes to our landscapes and homes, and better ensure people have the necessary resources and knowledge to help protect themselves from wildfire losses. We can remain strong and resilient if we work together. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that on behalf of the Lake County Board of Supervisors, I hereby proclaim June 18th, 2019 as Wildfire Preparedness Day in honor of Phil Bayless. I encourage all residents to recognize the importance of wildfire prevention efforts and work together to enhance our resilience and readiness. Passed and adopted this day of June 18th, and signed by Tina Scott, Board Chair.
Supervisor Bayless, stand, do you need, would you like to say anything?
I would just like to say Phil wasn't big on fanfare either, but he would appreciate the recognition of his efforts, and he would encourage the board to do all they can to work with the state government and the county and the governor to reinstate the SERC teams that were, train the trainers for community emergency response teams, so that we can have more citizens helping each other until the real help can get there, and help them get people out of harm's way. He would appreciate it. Thank you. See you Saturday.
See you Saturday. And the services for Phil will be from, start at 1 P M?
1 to 4, it's a party.
1 to 4, and it's a celebration. Thank you very much, Sandy, thank you, thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Okay, our 6.3 item, 9:11 a.m., consideration of continuation of a proclamation of a local emergency due to the atmospheric river storm event 2019, Sheriff.
Good morning. This item was brought to your board following a series of storms that came through earlier this year, resulting in a lot of rainfall dropping, which resulted in flooding in and around the shores of Clear Lake and waterways. It caused extensive damage to some infrastructures, and public roadways, and a lot of private properties. A proclamation of a local emergency was made and ratified by this board. Recovery is still underway, and emergency conditions still exist as a result of that atmospheric river, and continuation of the local emergency is required to be renewed every 30 days, pursuant to the government code and its staff's recommendation to do so.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for the continuation of a proclamation of a local emergency due to an atmos, the atmosphere river storm, river event in 2019.
A second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. 6.4, our 9:12 a.m. item, consideration of a continuation of a proclamation of a local emergency due to the Mendocino Complex Fire Incident, River and Ranch Fires, Sheriff.
In 2018, the River and Ranch Fire started in Mendocino County, quickly spread to Lake County. They grew to be, grew together to become the largest fire in California's history. It resulted in damage to public property, public lands and private property. A proclamation of a local emergency was, was declared and ratified by this board. Recovery is still underway, cleanup efforts are still underway. Emergency conditions still exist as a result of that fire. It's, continuation of the proclamation of a local emergency is required to be renewed every 30 days, pursuant to the government code and its staff's recommendation to do so.
Any questions or comments from the board on this item? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue a proclamation of a local emergency due to the Mendocino Complex Fire Incident, River and Ranch Fires.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6.5, 9:13 a.m. item, consideration of a continuation of a proclamation of a local emergency due to the Pawnee Fire Incident.
This one should serve as a reminder to all that the Pawnee Fire was the first major fire of 2018. It started in June of last year, and we're in June now, of course. The fire impacted the area of Spring Valley in Clear Lake Oaks, destroyed numerous homes. Recovery efforts are still underway, emergency conditions still exist. Proclamation of a local emergency was declared and ratified by this board. Continuation of the proclamation of local emergencies required to be renewed every 30 days, pursuant to the government code and its staff's recommendation to do so. See if I can get another 30 seconds one of these times.
Any questions or comments from the board on this item? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue a proclamation of a local emergency due to the Pawnee Fire Incident.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6.6, our 9:14 a.m. item, consideration of a continuation of a proclamation of a local emergency due to the sulfur fire incident.
In 2017, the sulfur fire started in the area of the Elam Indian Colony, city of Clear Lake, and Windflower Point. The fire caused numerous homes to be destroyed. A proclamation of a local emergency was declared and ratified by this board. Recovery is still underway, reconstruction efforts are still underway, emergency conditions still exist. Continuation of the proclamation of a local emergency is required to be renewed every 30 days, pursuant to the government code and its staff's recommendation to do so.
Any questions or comments from the board on this item? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue a proclamation of a local emergency due to the sulfur fire incident.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6.7, our 9:15 a.m. item, consideration of a continuation of a proclamation of a local emergency due to the Clayton Fire.
In 2016, the Clayton Fire started, it was determined to be an arson. It destroyed numerous homes and businesses in the community of Lower Lake. A proclamation of a local emergency was declared and ratified by this board. Emergency conditions continue to exist. I think we might be getting to one of those, to the area in time where we want to maybe start revisiting. This one is at several years old. I think that was a topic of discussion at one of the previous board meetings to discuss whether or not, how long we're gonna continue these. As it sits now, it's staff's recommendation to continue this proclamation of a local emergency as it's required to be renewed every 30 days.
Good, any questions or comments from the board on this item?
I think the only comment is, I know we had asked for it to come back with the deadlines on when we have to keep doing these things, right?
I think that it's, there's no set deadlines by Cal O E S. The recommendations are it's better to renew them than not, but we're going to get to a point if we're not already at these where the emergency conditions are gonna cease to become emergencies, so just part of the recovery effort.
I believe we're still waiting for a couple outstanding.
Yeah, and you know, okay, so the reason I asked, you know, for us to start picking these things off when we can, I mean, I get it, you know, leave them on there as long as we absolutely need to, so they're, so we're, you know, making sure we're in compliance and everything. But at some point, I think this community, this county, needs to get these fires behind us. And by having a proclamation every Tuesday, it's just a constant reminder on the agenda, it's just, you know, and so it's more for perception than anything, as soon as we can ditch them, let's ditch them. We're, we're, we're over it, we're behind it, I mean, there's only so many, I mean, you don't have a memorial every year after you've lost your father, you know, so you, it's, we have memorials for the fires. It's like greet, you know, trying to renew this grievance thing all the time, so we do it every Tuesday here. So sooner we get it behind us and just, you know, move on, I think the better off this community's gonna be.
Is there a reason these couldn't be on consent agenda?
You know, I've asked that question, because I know the city of Lakeport does, these items all on consent.
There's no reason at all.
I have to motion to put these out?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not set up there, sorry.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
With the caveat that I'd be happy to come back, and I know that there probably likely be input that would be valuable from the auditor controller as far as the finance recovery efforts, so,
Yeah.
what I would like to see is that, for the reasons that Supervisor Brown stated, as well as just expediency and respecting everybody's time, if these can go on consent until there's something significant.
Yeah.
I wouldn't argue that.
I agree.
The public can always, if the public has a question about any particular disaster, they can always ask to pull it, so it's fine.
So any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for the continuation of a proclamation of a local emergency due to the Clayton Fire.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6.8, our 9:16 a.m. item, consideration of a continuation of a proclamation of a local emergency due to the atmospheric river storm 2017.
In 2017, a series of storms came through and dumped a lot of precipitation and rain in and around Lake County. It resulted in widespread flooding along the shores and tributaries of Clear Lake. There was damage to public infrastructure, roadways, the promenade in Lakeport. Some of our water utility systems were impacted. A proclamation of a local emergency was declared and ratified by this board. As with the other items, there are still recovery efforts underway, and conditions still exist as a result of that flooding. And renewal of the proclamation of local emergency is required to be renewed every 30 days, pursuant to the government code and its staff's recommendation to do so.
Any questions or comments from the board on this item? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to continue a proclamation of a local emergency due to the atmospheric river storm 2017.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. 6.9, our 9:17 a.m. item, consideration of a continuation, the declaration of a local health emergency in order the endangerment and community through the unsafe removal of transportation and disposal of fire debris for the Mendocino Complex Fire.
Morning, Ford, I'm Dr. Erin Gussison, Public Health Officer here, requesting your board's consideration of continuation of a proclamation of a local health emergency in order prohibiting the endangerment of the community through unsafe removal, transportation, and disposal of fire debris due to, by the Lake County Health Officer due to the Mendocino Complex Fire. The debris cleanup has not been completed, and therefore, there may be exposure to hazardous substances that may lead to acute and chronic health risks, and the local health emergency proclamation is necessary in order, in order to protect the health and safety of the public. Thank you.
Any questions or comments on this item from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue the declaration of a local health emergency in order prohibiting the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal, transportation, and disposable fire debris for the Mendocino Complex Fire.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Erin. Okay, we're too early for our 9:30 item, so we're gonna go to our 7.2, consideration of the Advisory Board appointments for first five Lake County. Let's see, let's pull that up. Looks like we have two vacancies and two applicants. And I know that the first five board has talked this over, and we actually would like to keep these members on.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to,
Hold on one second. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board, if there's no further discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to appoint Allison Pinella, Member at Large, and also Carly Swotash, Swotash, Member at Large, for the first five board.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, our 7.3 item, consideration of an agreement between the city of Clear, Clear Lake, city of Lakeport, and the city of Lake to operate a local public educational government, padded cable television channel. This has been asked to be removed and discussed next week.
Yes, continue to June 25th, please.
Do we need a motion for that, Anita? Yes, so I need a motion to move this item to next week. Do I need to do public comment, or no?
You can ask if any members of the public are here who feels that you need to comment today instead of next week.
Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment today instead of next week on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I move to move 7.3 to the June 25th, please.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, 9:30, right on time. Our 6:10 item, 9:30 a.m. Our six ten item, nine thirty AM, continued from June fourth, two thousand nineteen, consideration of a request from the Board of Directors of the Lake County Community Radio, KPFC, for rate reduction in tower fees. Originally, KPFC asked me to move this item to another date when we had a full board, but then this morning asked to have this item heard. So we will continue. Six ten.
So, and I appreciate everybody's time on this and we should hear it today, but I also think, you know, Bruno had some thoughts on this and I think there's not an urgency on this. And so there, I think if, once we hear public input that maybe we should, I'm asking that we put it over and give him an opportunity to weigh in on it next week too, so. He will be back next week, right?
I honestly don't know.
I don't know Bruno's schedule.
I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't know if, I don't remember what he said, but...
I think he said he was going to be gone for two weeks, but I don't know if that counted last week when he left.
I think it was last week and this week because I don't have them on for that, so...
Yeah, I don't think he'd be back until probably July. Well, I mean, the next meeting, he'll be back in June, but after the meeting...
Well, it's up to the board, but I...
But how does that work in need if he doesn't hear all testimony? Can he come back and vote on?
It's all on...
Yeah, this is legislative and executive. It's not quasi judicial. In fact, here it's executive only.
Everything's on video too, so...
Okay. I guess we'll...
He didn't ask for it though, so...
He didn't ask.
So, you know, I do, I do, I get that too, but it's, it's fine. Whatever the board wants to do. He did not specifically ask for, to be here for the vote, you know, so.
I appreciate that, but my thoughts are, you know, if we could get this out of the way and make a decision one way or the other.
Okay.
I think that would benefit...
I'm good either way.
Well, yeah, from our, the reason that we decided to pull our original request is because our supporters are here and so they made time to come here today, but also in the interest of staff time, they are ready, as I understand it from, from talking with Lars, they are ready to present the answers that the board put to staff.
Those were the questions that Bruno had though. That's the irony of it.
Yeah, and but whatever the board...
Okay, what do I, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Lars, you're the Public Services Director. Last week, I believe it was last week, I'm losing track, I apologize, but a few specific items that were requested, you know, one specifically was, was the, I'll call it O and M costs. What are, what are our expenditures and what are our revenues? You know, how are we, how are we doing there? And also, before I touch on that, there was some discussion on some of the tenants that are up on Buckingham Peak that, that are there at no cost. Ham radio was specifically brought up along with the sheriff. They are there at no cost and I just, I wanted to add, and Olga and I discussed this, that sheriff's is there at no cost because of the, well, what I would say is obvious, the, you know, law enforcement and Office of Emergency Services. And along those lines, ham radio is there based on, at the request of the Office of Emergency Services from a two thousand and ten decision from the Board of Supervisors. So it is at no cost. It's not simply a, they're at no cost hidden. It was, it was addressed by the board at that point. So coming back to our costs, over the last ten to eleven years since the county purchased the mountain, there have been a number of expenditures. When I say purchased the mountain, there were two separate purchases. There was the mountain that is, that I will call the park, and then there was a separate purchase for Buckingham Peak. Buckingham Peak was purchased at a purchase price of one point two million. Since that time, there have been a number of investments and expenditures that we've had, and those are two different, two different terms. But I think it's important to note that, that some are investments that build towards the, you know, the improvement of that facility and some are expenditures for kind of day-to-day maintenance. You compare that with the revenue that, that we receive from the tenants and on average since two thousand and nine, our expenditures have exceeded our annual revenue. Expenditure totals, which include the purchase of the, of the peak along with day-to-day operations as well as specific improvement projects, we're looking at about two point six million, two point six million dollars of expenditures since two thousand and nine. Revenue is about two point five million, so not too far off. Annual averages, about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for expenses. Revenue is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you can see we are, we are operating short. Now, you, I don't have any charts or graphs that, you know, to put up, but I can tell you that when you factor out the purchase of the property, as you look forward, our annual expenditures average to include improvements that, that have been completed and that we, I think is reasonable to assume that we will continue to do some level of improvements up there, annual expenditures average about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, factoring, again, factoring out the, the actual property purchase. So, so I offer, offer that as a, as an, you know, as an answer to what Supervisor Savadia had, had asked for of our, our expenses and how much we make.
Okay. Any questions from the board for Lars?
Just a quick question to clarify, I was trying to jot down the numbers quickly, but going forward, could you clarify what this means going forward? So once the expenditures, the capital expenditures are dealt with, then what does it look like?
Well, capital improvements, there are a number of improvements that could be completed up at, up at Buckingham Peak. There's been some investigations for a new tower as well as improvements to a communications facility that we, we had, we already built, but there are server racks that can be installed there. There's a lot of improvements that can be done as well as, you know, fencing and roadwork, some of the, the basic routine.
Are they in the capital plan?
They would, there is no capital improvement plan but up there, but as far as what is reasonable to assume that, that we would be completing up on the, up on the, the peak, that was my, my thought, that using the, using the average over the last nine years, factoring out the purchase price of the property, you know, I think that's a reasonable approach to look at what our annual costs would, would be on, on the average.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Morning Lars. You, you mentioned that the ham radio club...
Excuse me just a moment. Questions should be directed to the chair, not to the, to the department here, just for sake of form, please.
Lars mentioned that the ham radio club had paid no rent up on the mountain. Then he said something about OES. I wondered if that was local or California? And how did that come about?
Is OES local?
It is, it is the Local Office of Emergency Services.
And did they approach the county on that?
They are the county.
Yeah.
That is the county.
I know that, but I just wondered what the, the technical avenue was.
Can you explain the technical avenue of...
My understanding is, is that the ham radio operators worked with the Office of Emergency Services to, to get an understanding of what services they provide and how that supports the OES. And, and that ultimately led to the, to the facility, the, the ham radio equipment being placed up on the mountain.
Okay, thanks. Lars, do you, do we have that one, you had a scale of the different prices that each entity paid per month in essence?
I didn't email it to you.
Or year?
There's an email that I sent you that has the, the PowerPoint. And I have it printed out. I can, I can hand that to you. Yeah, it looks like this. I'll connect the telecommunication laces. I can, I can talk to it while she's bringing it up if you have some specific questions. It, the, the, it was a single slide that, that talked about the, or showed the tenants' typical monthly costs and then some of the factors that played into the establishment of, of the rates. Specific to this, to this item, at least Lake County Community, Community Radio, their typical monthly cost now is about eight hundred dollars a month.
It was just seeing how the, the information that you provided initially, how's that correlate with, with some of that? It's just, it's the amount that you accrue.
Yes, how, how that relates is, is on the revenue side. This is, this is our, the typical monthly cost is the cost to the tenant to pay the county for, for having their facilities on Buckingham Peak. And, and so that, that relates to the revenue that we receive on an annual basis.
Thank you, Lars.
So if you were to lose this revenue from KPFC for their rent, you would have to pull it out of your budget somewhere else because you're not...
We, true, but without, you know, looking ahead at what expenditures we will have, I'd, I'd say that we're getting to the point where, where we're, we're about at a, a revenue neutral point. My, you know, without forecasting what, what true improvements are, are going to be planned up there, what new tenants might contact us with a request, and then therefore we need to make some investments to, to the facility, infrastructure investments. Do we have generator up there? We do. Yeah.
Supervisor Simon?
I appreciate all that information that you've given us, Lars, so we can get a full picture on where we're going with them. My thought on this, having time to think about it, obviously is both sides. Obviously, you guys understand the situation that the county's in at this point, with our budgets. We just went over those the last couple of weeks. And I would have a proposal today of, what we talked about last week, of coming up with a nonprofit cost. So if a nonprofit wants to go up on the tower, that we come up with a cost. I think a reasonable cost would be five hundred dollars a month, maybe revisited every five years to look at the costs and where we're at, so we can go over that. That would be a reduction in what is currently put in there. I bring up those numbers, Lars, when you said, when Kelly Cox first started this out, it was five hundred dollars a month and they had a CPI. And I thought, there's no way that we could, at least myself as a board member, zero this thing out. We need some revenue coming in from this. But my idea and my thought on it would be coming up with an ordinance for the nonprofits or a policy for nonprofits to be on there, starting at the five hundred dollars and then revisited, you know, maybe every five years. So that's my thought on it. I don't know if I'll get any backing from the board, but I think both sides come out with an opportunity here where KPFC gets a reduced cost. They can still continue what they're doing. They have to continue their fundraising for the people that do believe in the program, which I do, obviously. I think that is worth, so those are my thoughts. I don't know if I can frame that perfectly, but that's, that's my thought on direction to staff, on how we address this issue for KPFC. And I think both sides at this point would be one of our community. The county continues to get some revenue and it may even give another opportunity for nonprofits if they want to go up there. So it may be a revenue generator. So those are my thoughts at this point. I just want to get them on the table right off the bat.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I need to be reminded of what the other non, I know that there are entities up there that are not profit-making entities, so the schools, the county, but what, are there other nonprofits that are 501(c)(3)'s there? At this time?
I'm not gonna, can I?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna speak for Mo, but I can say, he may agree with this, that it's not just about who's up there right now. It's about potential growth.
Oh, I understand.
Could be other nonprofits that come in. It could be radio stations from outside the county who are also a nonprofit that want to rent the space. So there could be, it depends on how that policy that, that Mo's proposing to bring back to the board is framed. So it, it may not be about who's up there right this minute.
I understand. The reason I ask is because the county evidently does have policies for renting properties to nonprofits that I believe are 501(c)(3)'s. And I, in earlier testimony, I talked about the senior centers who obviously are providing essential services that, that support of the county's, the county's obligation, you know, to take care of its people. But there's also, I understand, the thrift store, at least the one in Lucerne, is a county-owned property that is leased or rented for a dollar a month. So my question is, is this an, is this an overall nonprofit policy or is it just for nonprofits that might want to use that particular property? Because there, see, I think there is a policy for properties for nonprofits.
Do we know there's, I know that we have agreements with other nonprofits for renting buildings, but I don't know if it's a policy for...
Well, you may have different past practices or policies for different situations. I don't know that you have any overarching policy that compares apples to oranges. And your board may have a number of considerations that go into those decisions that people could only speculate, including me, could only speculate on this morning.
So Supervisor Simon, are you looking for an overarching agreement or just an agreement for this?
No, I was looking directly for the issue that we have at hand today. Talking about the tower up on the mountain, that's exactly what I'm addressing. I'm not addressing any other leases or agreements that we have with nonprofits in other areas. What I'm talking about is, is the tower, the tower at this point, so.
Supervisor Brown?
And I, your analogy of the senior center is a good example of, you know, you, you do things like that, you rent that to them for a dollar a year with the agreement specific for that facility that they also do all the maintenance and they do this, they do the, the roof or, you know, whatever needs to be done. The county doesn't maintain it like we do up on the mountain. So each facility is going to be different as far as the arrangement with whoever that arrangement's made with. So, you know, we wouldn't ask you guys to go up there and maintain the tower in exchange for free rent, like, like we do with some of the other facilities that we have. So it's not the same.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the board before I open up to public? I will open up to public comment on this item. If you could state your name and then limit it to three minutes. And if we could not do the clapping, that'd be great so we can keep moving forward.
Thanks Lars for that. When's his evaluation, it's coming up. Pretty quick, isn't it?
Last week I emptied...
If you could state your names just for the record, please.
Name is Gene Polino.
Thank you, Gene.
Last week I went up and emptied some recycled material and drove all the way back down Main Street along Make Sure Drive to my home in Upper Lake. And I noticed so many improvements that this board has made for the county, for the good of the county, and I appreciate that and I thank you for that. I'm asking for one other favor. I've spoken on KPFC several times and it's always public radio, it's good for the community. When I talk about veteran services, I've been going to the VA and clinics since World War II, of ways I've talked that might help other vets. And I've also spoken to people about history of Lake County because many times people come in and they may have heard the broadcast or read something about it and makes them, if they're possibly have a business, they can bring into the county, certainly inspires some respect and good feeling about our great county to the people who already live here, especially the children. So I ask you on behalf of KPFC to go ahead and take, take care of that ten thousand dollars that we would, with senior centers, a dollar a year lease for any little, little additional things that you need from them to help out. And especially so, and I'll tell you this in confidence, this is one of the peoples who's done so much good work for the county, Olga Martin Steele, it's her birthday. So I ask that you take care of this.
Now that would be a great birthday present.
I don't think we grant wishes, but...
Hi, Cheryl Carr, Upper Lake. I've been a listener for about six years, but during the Mendocino complex fire, it really hit home. Yeah, I hate to do it like this. Thank you. It really hit home and it was just wonderful to just know automatically turn the radio on. And it was really great. And I also attended Mo's events at his facility. Eddie helped people out as, as a chair of their tribes. And so I really think you guys get it, that it, this is just a time to do the right thing. And you know when something's just, you do audit, something automatically because it's the right thing to do? This is one of those times. It's simple. Help the people who work for free to simply help the people. They study, they learn the correct information, they put the gas in their cars out of their fixed incomes, just to help, just do the right thing. Now it's your turn. You have the public support. Public meetings aren't enough after disasters. They hold our hands, so to speak, in the past and future disasters. And I've even heard callers who state that the county should even be paying KPFC because it's work you guys don't have to do, and you know that your people, your constituents, are in better shape. And the only other thing I want to say is that I did catch on the, when I watched the last meeting on TV, that AT&amp;T gets a little more bang for their buck, the conglomerate, because they have a fenced area and a small building up there. And KPFC isn't asking for that. And so just, and please, help the people of this county who are really desperate.
Do they pay for that?
Yeah, thank you for asking.
Yeah.
They do pay for that.
Yeah.
Over and above the 47?
That's factored into their ground lease.
Correct.
They have their own tower and a ground lease that was negotiated at that rate.
Thank you just for your consideration, every one of you. I thank you for your open mind, and I think Bruno's coming around too. Thank you.
Any further public comment?
My name is John Moorhead, I'm a board member, at the radio station, school teacher, longtime resident. First off, I want to thank you all for your gibbon eye in everything you do. And the critical issues that have been raised, your points that have been raised, critical, are very good ones, and they deserve consideration. Both sides now deserve absolute consideration. Thank you for the hard work and the introspection that you do, I've written to each of you on this matter. What I would say, and this is just one letter out of a novel, the whole thing with public safety power outage, the first thing on your supervisory website is public safety. And the whole thing with the public safety power shut-off, this is ter- incognita for all of us. And I don't want to use the train, phrase crane wreck, but it's a crane wreck, okay? It's an evolving, very dynamic situation that we have not encountered, and people don't get it. Repeat when necessary. And I'm talking, every time I'm in a business, what are you doing for PSPs? I'm talking to individuals. And the level of deniability out there is huge. No matter how many flyers, PG and emails out, no matter how much is put on agendas, and there's these meetings and this and that, there isn't enough horsepower to get the word out. And the radio station is there 24/7, and when it goes down, you need that. You need to be able to communicate it. And sometimes you gotta, you gotta tell people 17 times for them to get it once. When you listen to a song, what do you remember? The lyric line, the chorus, the hook. How often is it repeated? Love me do. Y'all know the words, right? That song's 60 years old. So, the voice, your voice is the first, the voice is the first thing people hear, and that's what the radio station is. We're a voice for the people, we're a voice to the people. And the radio station and the county are we the people. You are serving us, we are serving the county. And we appreciate any consideration that you give. If you cannot provide any consideration, we are thankful for the opportunity to raise the issue. And we will be back. But I appreciate that, but now we're down to maybe $500 a month? Guys, go pick up the B's rate card, go get KXBX's rate card. I think they're, it's back in New Jersey. But you want local media? We're local media, and we're here for only one reason, not to turn a buck, but to communicate. And we are your voice, we can be your voice, we will be your ally regardless. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
So I got a question here before, before the next person comes up, if I could.
Supervisor Brown.
So I keep hearing a constant theme of, we need to get a break, we need to get a break, but there's never any mention of, you're already getting one because of the status you're in, and the nonprofits. So what would they be paying if they weren't getting a break? If they weren't getting, if they were just paying like everyone else?
So in trying to get an answer to that, it was, what I'm finding out with communications facilities is most of them are privately owned, and it's proprietary information.
Right.
They're simply not sharing that.
Okay, I got you.
But the best information that we could get was, was a higher rate, you know, about, you know, double. And so I, you know, but I don't have an exact number for it.
So there is a discount considered because of their nonprofit status and their, everything that goes along with what they're saying why they need more of a discount. There's already one given.
Well, I can only assume that that was factored in when the agreement was initiated, but I don't know if that really was factored in, so.
Good point. Yeah, you weren't, yeah, that would have been Kim Clymeyer. Yeah. I'm sure that's the reason, though, I mean, so anyway, I just want to make sure that it wasn't lost on everyone, that there is a discount given already, so it's not as if they're not getting something, so.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Brown, actually, the original contract was with the prior owners of the Peak, and that contract, I believe, was for $500, and I don't think that that was a discounted rate. I will let Andy verify that, but I don't think it was. So assuming that as a nonprofit, you know, you get a break, I don't think we actually did. And then, of course, with the 4% accelerator, it's jumped up to eight, over $800.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. I, that does make sense. Then, yeah.
Hi, I'm Chloe Carl. I'm a past president of Lake County Community Radio. And I just wanted to point out that we have a scarcity of media outlets in our county, and that we do not have any other radio station that is locally based here that takes responsibility for the disasters and emergencies, and that, so we're a very, very high-level asset to the county, and we're very open to having any of the county administrators and departments come on the radio at any point. So I want to point that out because it's, we have struggled to survive, and we have survived, and we're very careful about how we use our money. So I appreciate your concern about the county's funds. I just want to point out that I even just heard yesterday that Radio Dave and the Dispasse Patch Service has been outsourced to another county. So, I mean, there are concerns about can we keep things here, is the record be going to up and move to another county? We're here, and we're community radio, and a lot of people don't understand that we're not only non-commercial, we're not really public radio, we are community radio, and we're open to the community in every way. I just want to point out the uniqueness of that, and I was very proud to help out during the Mendocino complex fire during that time when we were operating last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chloe. Any further public comment on this item? Okay.
So I just want to very much appreciate your time on this, Lars. Thank you for the staff time. I know you guys are really, really busy and short-staffed. Supervisor Simon, I very much appreciate your thoughts to provide a reduction. The point I want to make is that we're really looking at what good for what people at what cost. And our costs are awfully low. We, as has already been pointed out, we're all volunteer. The good, I want to reiterate, that we reach people that otherwise aren't reached by traditional commercial media. These are people that may not have computers, and this is particularly the case in our more high-poverty areas, but these are people that don't necessarily have computers, and not even iPhones, but they have a radio. Almost everybody has a radio. As to the concerns that we don't reach all of Lake County, we did take on the cost of live streaming so that we could reach a broader audience. And during the last emergency, we actually were able to pipe in the presentations that were made by Cal Fire and county officials. So we're making advances that way. We would be looking into perhaps podcasting to reach a broader audience that way. But that's the fundamental question, and five, a reduction, of course, we would welcome that. I would ask that you consider that we are an essential service, and that a lower reduction would be, I think, appropriate, given, again, the fundamental question that is being asked, what good for what people at what cost? There is just no way that the other media sources or the county staff can reach some of the people that we're able to reach with your message, with message of emergencies. And I just ask you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we had one more public comment.
Good morning. My name is Doc Robles, and I'm from Nice, California. And I'm not much of a public speaker, and I'm a member of KPFC, and so is my lovely partner Kathleen. Being a writer, I went back in my journal from last summer, and when the radio did go off and we didn't hear anything from the great 88 for a lot of days, and so I went back to that another night between, I think it was July 28th and 29th. And anyway, the ashes kept falling like snow. Everyone's asleep in the house. A quiet night when the radio died, felt like losing your last friend, the big beat, the soul engine now parked in the dark, a coat of ashes end to end. Please waive the fee. You know, it's such a small action, and it could have such a big impact on the community. And hey, I got time left. Just going through my journal, I found an old quote that has nothing to do with this, but it does have to do with radio. The great Dr. Hunter Thompson once said, "On some nights, I still believe that a car with the gas needle on empty can run about 50 more miles if you have the right music on very loud on the radio."
Thank you. See, no further public comment. I'll bring it back to the board. For myself, I agree with Supervisor Simon. I believe that KPFC is good for the community, like Mr. Moorhead stated, which I think it comes from a teacher too. Things have to be said over and over and over again before people get it. I am finding that with the community, with our power shut-offs that we're talking about, with our FireWise, when we're talking about being prepared. We have many in our community that say they haven't heard anything about it, and we're, I mean, it's everywhere. And so I agree, we need KPFC to get the word out, and they are good for our community. I don't think as, the way our budget sits in the county, I don't believe we could waive, waive that, because I know that that would ultimately come from Lars's, from his budget, and I wouldn't want to do that to him, but I would agree to a rate reduction. Supervisor Crandall?
So I want to thank you again for putting this up here, because this really gave me, last meeting, something to go off of, when I seen the bottom amount at 438, and then with the Yolo County flood being 623. I felt like that was a good range, and, you know, looking at a decrease from what's currently charged, I am in favor with what Mo had stated. I was looking at something in the 450 range, but then when you think about the 4%, it kind of equals out when it comes to the 500. I think that's a good start. And, you know, just looking back to the fires this last year, the Mendocino complex, you know, I was driving around the lake, you know, probably twice a day, and, you know, looking at your cellphone, waiting for another Nixle or something like that, or trying to, you know, stream something off of Facebook, you know, with KPFC going full board, it really helped give me some sort of, some information that really helped. And so I know everyone here was involved with a lot of different things that they were bringing forward. I went to the meetings that were in Kelseyville, and so I know everybody in the county was really working towards getting information out and doing the best they can. I appreciate the work that KPFC does, and so I'd be in favor of the same thing, so.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, I don't mind looking at the policy as Mo suggested, but we're not doing that today. We don't have a policy before us to look at. You know, I too agree that there is some value to KPFC, and, but to be under the illusion that any form of media, including KPFC, is 100% accurate or even close to 100% accurate, I'm just going to throw it out there. There were a lot of times, I was listening to the radio too, and I'm like, oh my God, I can't believe somebody just said that, because it's not true. And so you have to call in and correct it, or try to call in. And then in the meantime, getting calls from people that are staying at Canock there, they're staying wherever, I just heard on KPFC, or I just read this somewhere, and then you gotta correct it, or on Facebook, and that's nothing to do with you guys, but it's like, you know, I felt like marking myself safe at the media fire, because that was where the disaster really was. It was misinformation that's put out there, there's no control over the information. You guys don't even have control over it. It's not people that are in the studio that are putting this out all the time, there's some of that, but there's a lot of callers that come in and say, I just heard this was going on. And then it's out there. So it's not 100%, you know, we just can't live without it. You know, I don't want to live in the past, but 30 years ago, we had 80% volunteer firefighters. We had over 20 reserve deputies. We had no radio station other than KBLC. So there were, and guess what? We survived. We didn't have cell phones, we didn't have Nixle, we didn't have all that stuff, and we didn't have, we didn't have our county burning down either, but we did have fires. So we do survive without all this stuff that people are saying, we can't live without it. Well, okay, I'm not saying we should live without it, but I'm also saying we can't, we put this thing off so we could have our budget hearings. I heard nothing during budget hearings that was compelling to say, oh, I didn't realize we had all this extra money. It's just the opposite. In fact, right after that came up, that was, by the way, two weeks ago that we had that, because we had budget hearings, and then last week, we found out that now we're probably going to need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on generators, that wasn't even included in the budget for, because of PG&E. So we've got all these things that come up as surprises to run our physical government plant without, you know, this organization or that organization is more important than others, so we need to waive this, we need to waive that. We're in no position to do that right now. We just aren't. So that's my two cents worth. I don't mind bringing it back as a policy for facilities on how we adjust or schedule, you know, fees and fee increases on a regular basis, but that's not what the discussion is today. It's either, you know, we make a decision on this right now based on largely emotion, because we really don't have any numbers that we can say, yeah, based on what Lars is presenting, this is the actual number that we can afford to. This is based on, you know, you're giving an organization money because we believe in them, and that's not what we should be basing this on.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, when I talk about the policy, obviously that'll be a long-term thing too, but there's value in the radio just for comfort of the folks in the community to have somewhere, whether it's precise information or information. I understand that too, Rob. There's been plenty of times you're saying, well, this is what I heard on the radio. Well, that isn't true. And we get the calls, so we know we're doing that stuff. But it's one more media source that they have, it comforts them, and sometimes that's all you need is a comfort. So I see the value in that, and I understand our budget issues. When we talked about it, I thought we made some sacrifices too, just from the Board of Supervisors budget. And we took out the travel policy for South County. That's $7,500, I think, that was in there. So in those decisions, when you're making those decisions, at least myself, thinking, all right, here's an opportunity maybe where we could do something for the community, make a sacrifice overall for the budget. So there are opportunities, I think, that we moved in the right direction with the budget. I think every organization that's attempting to help us is important, but I also want to reiterate, the EOC, Emergency Operations Services, the Board of Supervisors, everybody that's involved in the emergency response is just as critical or more critical than KPFC, because we're the ones that need to make sure things are going to be happening, sheltering's going on. It's great to have the information out there, but I really want to make sure in the discussions today that I thank everybody from the county side that's in the emergency operations centers, the OES, working with all our state officials and the rest that are putting those hours in, that, you know, they deserve just as much compliment or more than KPFC. And I just always want to do that. So my thoughts on it today, I know I talked about the policy maybe for long terms, so we don't have to keep coming back to the board on this for nonprofits if they want to go up there, but, you know, for me, I would like to make a motion today that we do reduce the cost to $500, and we look at it for a five-year period, and that would be a motion that I would like to make today. And then come back with a policy at a later date, so we don't have to keep bringing this back to the board.
I have a motion.
I'll second it, and also just add that it is a nonprofit, so that way it's just, it seems justifiable, or it is justifiable for me to go with that route as well, so I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do we need a date or anything on that, or just?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was just going to offer, is drafting up an amendment that we would send through county council's office, and then once that's been vetted, then bringing it back here to the board.
Okay.
The next increase is not until November, so we do have some time.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lars, thank you for all you worked.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lars.
Thank you.
Our 6.11 item, 9:45 a.m., discussion and consideration of a backup generators for county buildings due to PG&E public safety power shut-off. Lars?
Good morning, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. At the budget hearings, there was discussion of backup generators, and this item was requested on June 11th, excuse me. Staff received direction to bring forward discussion and possible board direction about the county's plan for backup power at county facilities resulting in, or from PG&E's planned public safety power shut-offs. What we, what staff has done since that time is, I'll say feverishly, trying to size generators, identify what generators are available, permanent, temporary. identify what generators are available, permanent, temporary, what options we have to, to size a generator to full capacity versus downsizing it so only certain circuits run. So, what, what I'm going to be presenting is not, it's not the recommendation, it's, it's options enough, hopefully enough or to, to make an informed decision, but at least enough to, to, for the board to give some consideration. What, what I did with, along with a lot of, a lot of department heads and I, I want to make sure I thank Susan Parker, she was a, a great help identifying some, some rental options. We looked at facilities that, that don't currently have backup power and I think it's important to start with the recognition that there are a number of facilities and I'll use the term critical facilities that have previously been identified that, that need them or are in the process of getting them and there are, there are dozens, dozens of them. What, what, the, the direction was to look at the, the, I hesitate to call them non-critical and I absolutely will not, but the, the facilities that do not have backup power that house county employees, what can we do to ensure that to the maximum extent possible that those facilities can, can maintain operational, remain operational during a, a shut off? A lot of, a lot of variables, how much, how much time will the, the shut off be? We, we don't know. We, we've been, you know, told numbers of, you know, four to five days, maybe it's one day, but, you know, a lot of variables there. When, obviously we, we don't know. So, in, in discussions with department heads, identifying the facilities that, that, that we would want to at least investigate and that's what we did is, is an investigation of about, about a dozen buildings to include the one that we're, we're sitting in now. I, I will tell you that we looked at that both permanent and temporary, but where we started was sizing the, the generators and that's, that's easier said than done. It's, it's not as, it's not as easy as looking at your PG&E rate. That's, you know, kilowatt hours does not relate to what you need for a generator. So, we did need to look at, at the power in, what the, what the actual panel, what, what size of the panel, basically what is the amperage that we're, we're pulling from that. So, and they vary, you know, the smaller facilities, yeah, we're, we're looking at maybe 30 kilowatts and this, this building to, to have it fully operational, estimates are about 750 kilowatts and then reducing it down from there if we want to pare back on, on some of the, the circuits. You know, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to it, but I, but I think I'd like to share are the buildings that we looked at and I did not, I will admit that I just did not have time to, to get it up into, into a presentation. So, I, you know, it might be an opportunity to answer questions after I go through this just to let you know kind of rough figures and that's what these are. These are, you know, rough figures and there's, there's a couple of components to it. Whether we go temporary or permanent, every building that does not have backup power right now needs to have electrical upgrades completed. We're talking about a transfer switch, conduits, wires pulled, there's, there's a lot of work there. And cost for that range from anywhere from 10,000, just for the electrical work to have it ready to accept the power, we're, we're anticipating estimating about $10,000 up to, for this building, we may be looking at up to $75,000 to, to have it ready. You know, these are, these are, that's simply to have it, have it ready to accept the, the generator. Permanent price and I'll, let's, let's start at, at this, at the courthouse for a, a generator that would be sized to run this, this building, we're looking at about $190,000 for the, the generator, the actual purchase of the generator, plus again, that $75,000 figure that I, that I mentioned for the, for the upgrades. The, the timing of that and that's, that's the, the down, well, there's a lot of downsides, but we are looking at a lead time for, for those generators of, you know, three to five months out. These are not things that are readily available. On a temporary basis for this building, we, we can rent both, either on a contingency basis or on a standby and, and the difference between those two is the contingency would provide what the, what I'm understanding to be a first right of refusal for the equipment with a guarantee that the mobilization of that equipment would be available within 48 hours. So, effectively it's kind of a reservation and that, that price would be for this, for this building would be 5,000 a month. There's also the option of a standby and that would be literally onsite, either onsite here or onsite at a nearby location and that more or less doubles. We're looking at about $10,000 to $12,000 a month. That powers the whole building to include the, the fourth floor, which are the courts and, and I, I think it's important to note the, the cost sharing agreement that we do have with the courts, that they are required to pay for a 30% cost sharing for, for any improvements that we do. Now, I, this, whether this would, would be considered for that, you know, we'll have to have conversations with the, with the courts for that. Another option that, that was raised to me this morning by Jeff Ryan is, is the tenants, the, the self-carriers on the, on the roof, they were previously looking at, at backup generators for their, for their, their equipment. There's a potential that we could, we could work with them and they could at least cost share if we did one large generator that also provided power for their facilities, perhaps they, they kick in there. So, so we do have some options for, for outside funding that would, that would help, but I, you know, for a, you know, big picture generator decide to, to run this whole building, we are looking at about $250,000, $300,000. If we want to pare it down so that we shut down certain circuits, you know, maybe we don't run the AC 100%, we, we turn off certain lights and we can, you know, we can reduce it, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's 200,000 instead of 250. Again, rough order magnitude costs is what I wanted to provide. Other buildings, I'll, I'll list the buildings that, that we looked at and I will say that, that these are the, the county-owned buildings that, that we looked at. I, I understand that there are a lot of department heads that, that have leases for, for buildings and I think that I'm aware of at least one that is looking at, at just that for, for their facility. Hopefully, maybe they can come up and comment on, on the status that they have. But we looked at, at every, every building in, on the, what we call the courthouse campus, so victim witness, buildings and grounds. I would propose that we don't even do that when we can operate elsewhere. We looked at, at the museum. The museum is actually powered from the courthouse. Service comes in here and it heads over. We could certainly shut that circuit down, but I think it's important that we recognize the artifacts that are there that may need to be, to be preserved, but that was looked at. Special districts, Lakeport Library, probation, the Ag Building, animal control, the Middletown Library and Senior Center, South Shore Behavioral Health, Clear Lake, the Red Bud Library and Special Districts. And I, I did add in here and this is, we didn't quite get all the information, but Child Support Services, it is, it is a, a lease, but that's something that we want to, we want to investigate what, what might, might be needed there. So, those facilities that I just mentioned, not, not nearly the size requirements that, that this building would have. They would be more than likely propane and the costs range from anywhere from 15,000 up to 60,000 for the generator with install prices from 10 to 20, $25,000 each. Lead times for those, again, we are looking at, at least a couple of months. Having talked to a number of generator companies and electricians, there's a, they're all being pulled, electricians and the generator companies. So, even if we had a generator right now that we could plug in, electricians are, are being pulled every which way right now. So, one electrician that I talked to this morning was six weeks out. Now, maybe we can get one and, and I, you know, but I honestly, we didn't, we didn't put out a bid. We weren't calling every, every electrician in the, you know, in the, in Northern California trying to identify if they were available, but I, I can tell you it's not something that, that we can pull the trigger on right now and have it, have it done next week for any, any one building, much less, much less all of them. It's my staff, you know, I, they're, they're outstanding. They could, they could get it done, but they, they don't have the capacity to, to get it done right away. Absolutely.
Supervisor Brown?
So, man, this is a, this is a way larger discussion than this. I just, all these stuff, all these things are going through my head. So, when you're, when you're talking about, you know, the museum and, you know, and, you know, different things that need, that are temperature sensitive, well, first of all, that, that sheet that you have down there that has all the costs, do you have that available?
I can, yeah.
Okay. Because I'm trying to keep up with the numbers. What are the total, what are the total fees? It's all right, Bruno's not here, so we're, it's, you're fine.
Okay, so, so total, permanent for, for all buildings. So, let's, I want to set the courthouse aside.
Yeah.
The other facilities that we looked at, total, total price is $380,000.
To, to purchase?
That's the, that's the generator price. The install price is 160, so we're looking at, you know, we're looking at about what, doing math off the top of my head.
540.
540, thank you.
So, even if we could rent, the, the possibility of having them operational this summer is probably.
Right, no, it's not possible. So, I'm going to be very careful about straying from this because it's a bigger discussion. We're going to have to determine, I, I hate this term, but I don't have another term for it. It's nonessential employees who, they need to know right up front. If PG&E says they're going to shut power off, stay home and we'll, we'll have to deal with that. That's, that's separate because, you know, that's an additional cost. That's, you know, they get four hours, they should get paid. You know, it's going to be a, a real hardship on everybody, but if they're not going to be working, they need to know right up front. So, I don't know how that's going to work out.
Make sure your microphone.
There was some information that went out from admin on that this, wasn't it this week?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Brian, are you leaving or are you coming up? Okay, good, because I was going to, I was going to ask you to come up. In fact, come on up.
I have a conference call in 10 minutes regarding some things too, so I'll try to make my quick. I'll respond to that.
Well, okay, I, I wasn't exercising any authority to tell you to go ahead and speak because that's the chair.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering. I thought I was running the meeting.
I just wanted you to be in part of the, part of the discussion. So, that's why I asked you to come up to answer.
Please, Sheriff.
Thank you. The comment about if PG&E shuts power off, employees stay home. I want to make that clear for my department members. We have facilities available, so I expect my employees to show up for work. I don't want somebody calling and saying, well Supervisor Brown told me not to come to work because the power is out.
I don't believe I said that.
I think I might have been.
Unless they heard that on KPFC. No, I said, we need to have another discussion about who those employees are going to be. I said it in English and everything, so I don't know.
So, please, yes, don't, don't just stay home with the power.
I don't want that to be mistaken, so. All the sheriff's office employees out there. And I'm happy to stay for any more discussion for seven minutes.
So, Sheriff, just so everybody, the public is aware, your operation will continue. We will have public safety. They'll be able to call 911, all of that, right?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. The, the jail's backup generation, they ran a test on the, the system to see what's going to work, what's not going to work. As was brought before the board meeting last month, our evidence facility is going to have hopefully, you know, before the first public safety power shut off, something installed to preserve evidence. Our administration building has generation power. Our dispatch center has emergency generation power as well as the EOC. So, in the event of an activation of the EOC, we'll be able to continue to run. Sheriff's Dispatch Service has an, an inner UPS uninterrupted power source. I'm having tongue-tied moments today too, Supervisor Simon. So, there should be no change in operations. We're looking, currently looking at a way to get a generator at one of the repeater sites, I believe Hunter repeater site, has backup generation available that will last for a couple of days, but we're working on plans for putting in a generator there. That will be an idea brought for the board as well to ensure that our radio signals make it to where they need to go too. So, emergency services as far as sheriff's office and OES should go, remain uninterrupted.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, I want to add one more thing to, this doesn't involve the sheriff for that, so that's okay. So, if we, if it's two months at best, that would get us through the heat wave anyway. So, we have basically, even though we've had a year that we knew this was going to happen, we didn't really know what the full impacts were going to be until now, until it starts happening. So, is there a way that now we can start looking at alternatives? Because I'll, I'll tell you, I know we don't have a lot of money, but I would, rather than spend a half a million dollars on a remedy for two weeks out of the year, I would rather spend a million dollars to be a little more self-reliant and get away from PG&E altogether or at least for, for months out of the year for other alternatives, you know, whether that be solar, wind, whatever, I don't care what it is. Let's, you know, let's look at other alternatives. So, let's see if that's something that we can do while we have the time to do it.
And that solar, the, the solar discussion, I mean, it's in progress. We are, we're working on that, on the invitation forbids. We've said it over the last few weeks and it is, it is being worked, so that's, but it's, it's not, you know, it's not this summer, I'll, I'll tell you that. I, I do want to comment that for, for the courthouse and I, the IT director is here, I appreciate Shane being here, he, he can answer a little bit better on, on what the backup power that is currently here will provide for, for IT purposes. My understanding is that it, it provides backup power for essentially everything. You know, if, if he wants to comment, I'd appreciate it, but we did get that confirmation.
Shane?
Hi, Shane Franch, IT Director. Yeah, so basically we do have backup generator power here. Lars helped me this week determine that everything, including our, our internet and site-to-site connections are on that backup generator. From an IT perspective as far as services that we provide, web services and connectivity services for other facilities, to the extent that those facilities are online, they'll be able to have access to those services and certainly the public will have access to our web presence as well.
One other, one other thing to comment on here is, is we did not, now the facilities, I'm stopping short of a recommendation of providing backup power at this building and not that building. That's, that's, you know, that's an operational decision that, that is not my place to make. It, it would indicate that a certain, certain department is more important than another for, for the purposes of, of providing power at an office because that's really what we're looking at. We're not looking at the, the communication facilities, even in, in my department, the, at the landfill, gatehouse. I, I need to have power so that we can keep garbage flowing. I'm keeping that out of this discussion because we tried to keep it at the, at kind of the office, the, the office look. What, what offices, what county administrative offices need to remain open and that's, that really is, is where we are, trying to give information so that we can, you know, get a, get a scope of just those, not, you know, not those other unique, I'll say, unique facilities.
Supervisor Simon?
Appreciate the conversation. You know, I forwarded you something too. Everybody's looking at backup generation. I sent you something just this morning, Lars, probably just a few minutes ago, about the senior center went out in Middletown and got a, a quote. I don't know why, but they sent it to me, but they sent it to me, so no discussions were going on. Me and you have had the discussion about long-term for solar power. You know, there's even the Tesla backup battery systems. There's all kinds of things and I know you're working on that and that'll come to the board. My thoughts on this for short-term is getting everything ready for that over the next year, but really looking at the, the rental and the leasing part, it, I think would be prudent for us to look at. Obviously, may involve some double costs eventually, but if you prep it for continual use this year, but just a plug-in, I think that would be a, a smart way to move. I know that community facility grants through USDA and other things, I think there's opportunities there that we can look at in the future to help us get, get some of these costs recouped or pick out the buildings that we're going to use, but my thought is getting some of the larger facilities, like you said, courthouse, museum, those types of things on some general backup power and doing it on a lease option this year or rental, like you were talking about, $5,000 a month, call up a 48-hours age, roll it into the back space over there and plug it in so we have an opportunity to run the facility. So, I think you're moving in the right direction. I wish we would have had some recommendations, but, you know, I think all the discussion happening today is, is pretty good. And I understand the critical use and then other individuals just are going to have to wait over the next couple of years as we prepare and grow our capacity to take care of these issues that are being thrown at us by PG&E.
You know, I, indicating that I'm stopping, stopping short of a recommendation for which facilities to, you know, to go full bore on, but I, I think if we, in, in order to put them at any one facility, the infrastructure is the first thing that needs to be done, the, the electrician to simplify. And I, I say simplify because it's, you know, it's not my wheelhouse, the, the electrical components, but that, that would need to be done at any given facility. We look at the, at the costs, as I indicated, I, you know, $160,000 is, is the estimate for the, for the, not the courthouse, but, but all the other facilities, courthouse, maybe 75,000. So, we're looking at, you know, maybe $250,000 for, for the infrastructure at the, at the facilities in order to accept the, the generator, whether it's mobile or, or permanent. So, you know, perhaps a recommendation, that's a, that's a very soft language, a recommendation would be, that would be the first step. We could, we could initiate the, the design, I'll, I'll use that term, we could initiate the design for each of those buildings and, and get it to be a little bit, so we have some specifications and then potentially that, put that out to bid, but that presumes that there's funding for it. So I, and I, you know, it's certainly not in, in my budget to, to spend a quarter million dollars on, on upgrades to a building to accept even additional costs that would be required for the, the generators themselves.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, I, I think we've pretty much covered it. I, you know, it's like Moke was talking about, there's, it's really unfortunate when we're dealing with government stuff, you know, all of a sudden to just write the check and we'll figure out how to pay for it some other way, you know, and it's just, you know, I, I gotta bid to do my own house, and with a generator to run my house, and it's not any more electricity than the museum, or the senior center, or anything like that. It's a pump, it's, it's running a household, and it's twenty-one hundred dollars for installation, generator, hookup to the power, everything. So, it's just, it's just unfortunate that you go to government, all of a sudden, it, you know, and I guarantee you, my house doesn't run any more electricity than the freezers at the Sheriff's Department. So, it's just, when the government's involved, it's prevailing wage, it's all this other nonsense that goes on that we have no control over, and so, so get the checkbook out.
Supervisor Brown, if, if you don't mind me asking the, the sizing of that, cuz I am, I am curious.
Ten thousand watts.
Ten thousand, okay. And, and the smallest that we have here is thirty, is, they're thirty KW.
Yeah. Ten thousand's all you need to run a house, so.
So they, obviously...
You can buy those at Costco at six, for six hundred and twenty dollars. Nate, Nate's Electric can install it for nine twenty, including all the stuff to hook into the, into the house, plug it in, so.
And I, just for, for comparison...
Although I didn't buy it at Costco, it was nine hundred and twenty at Kelseyville Lumber, so I bought it there.
And just for comparison's sake, we, we do have some hard figures, the, the evidence building that, that was just discussed last week, thirty, thirty KW, thirty thousand watts, it was a total price of just under forty thousand dollars. And those were, those, you know, fully bid. The generator itself was, I believe, seventeen thousand, plus another three or four thousand for the transfer switch, or the, yeah, the automatic transfer switch, and other components. So it, and then thirteen thousand for the labor, and, you know, so it, it is there, it adds up.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, no, I just wanna thank you again for bringing this forward, this information, and Rob, for bringing this up during the budgets, because I know that, that, you know, it wasn't something we've been necessarily talking about, you know, and so, one of the things that, just to keep into consideration, I know that last year during the fires, Robinson Casino has a generator, but it, it broke. And so, we had to have someone come out as well, and so the, so I don't know if whatever generate, whatever we go for, if there's a package for maintenance, or if we have someone on site to do that. I just wanted to kinda be mindful of that as well, because that became a problem, cuz we needed that power, but when it broke, we were stuck, you know, so.
Yeah, that's a big plan.
All, all the current generators, backup generators that we have are on a maintenance plan through...
Okay.
Both monthly with our staff, doing, doing a, just a basic check, and then annual, annual maintenance from an outside contractor.
And with, and with it being that just the power shut offs, that's, that's fine, they can get here, but the Mendocino complex fire, or any type of fire like that, in the future, there was a hard time for them to get in from certain areas, and so it just kinda delayed that even further. So I just, you know, it, you're right, it is a big plan, and I just wanted to kinda throw that out there as well, but now, now knowing that there is a maintenance plan, that's a big, that's a big deal too, so.
I have a question, because I'm not an electrician. If we were to put the money into the building to get it prepared to be able to hook up to a generator, would that be the same type of infrastructure you would need if we end up going solar with a battery backup, the same kind of...
Yeah.
So, so either way, it would be the, we wouldn't have to redo something?
It should be, because that, it's, it's effectively, you're just changing where you're getting the power from. That transfer switch, everything, everything in front of the, the transfer switch, you almost look at it like a black box, and, and you, you switch it and...
The building doesn't know where the power's coming from, so it could come from any, any source.
So it'd be the same. I'd just hate to do something and then go to another system.
Yeah, there may be some slight alternatives.
There would, there would be some minor, yeah, exactly. In fact, I have a meeting this afternoon, specific to, to energy efficiency and solar, to, you know, leading to what we were talking about earlier. That's a, that's an excellent question that I could ask to, to that, for that meeting.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I think you're averaging, the quote that I had sent you for the senior center came in at about thirty-two thousand, it's a sixty KW. The biggest cost is the transfer switch. We have the easiest ones out there, flicking it in the middle of the night.
It's as much as a generator war, yeah.
Well, it's, just for the Middletown one, it's fifteen thousand dollars for the transfer switch, and the actual generator's only about five thousand dollars. So, to, you know, obviously, you wanna make that for convenient as people as possible, so we're not dealing with that. A couple of questions, just to follow up on it, cuz we're looking at these general thing, generator thing. So we talked about solar, I know Tesla has their backup battery situations and stuff, and I know North Bay rebuild, Jennifer Gray, at, at least talking to the OES or somebody here in the county about potential long-term uses of those, that would include solar. So all those things, I think, are lease options, other things too, so when we look at the overall cost, I think we're gonna be able to work out some good things as we move forward here with the solar. The one question I would have, this would be more to Anita and Lars, let's say, you know, obviously, we always budget constraint, but if there's issues, let's say, Middletown Senior Center or other places, get, get something donated on a project like this, how would that process work? Let's say if an organization wanted to step up and say, hey, we wanna help the county put a generator in at the senior center, could, whether it's LARCA or anybody, would, would that be able to work?
I, I think you could include those kind of things. I think it's gonna be important for your board to devise what your operational plan's going to be, and what you're going to do first, and how, and then you can add to those things, so that you're not top-heavy taking on too many things all at the same time. But if you build your plan, then certainly you can work into that planned donation situation. There's no, there's no problem with that.
I just wanna talk about it a little bit right now. I understand the most critical thing is getting our infrastructure here for the county so we're operating. You know, my thoughts are, I think, for this year, like you said, let's get the infrastructure ready, we plug it in this year, and then we look at the long-term, how we're gonna make it through year after year, moving forward. And I know you have the plan with coming to us for RRP and other things, for solar and backup, so I think we're in the right position, it's just hit us sooner than we expected.
So if I could offer, to, to that end, if, over the next week, working on, well, working on, on either an invitation for bids, or some specifications to, for what we need at each building, and, and fine-tune that, that way, that way we're, we're addressing what needs to be done regardless, whether it's, whether it's solar, or, or permanent, or temporary, and, and just attack that. I'm not saying attack it and, and sign the contract with, with the electrician, I'm saying, I, you know, further refine this, so we're not looking at rough order of magnitude, so we identify what, what specific equipment, what conduit do we need? What, you know, where's the transfer switch gonna go? Is there gonna need to be a pad? You know, what, what housing, you know, for, for sound, soundproofing, what, what do we need? So refine it at each location, and, and those figures would then, would then be refined. Now, it begs the question, are we looking at this on a whole-scale basis, where this is one project, and we're going with one contractor, and, and now we're, we're putting that out to bid?
Yeah, good point.
Or do we look at one individually? Each, each building is its own, is its own project, which, you know, from a project management perspective complicates it, but now we're, now we're getting it out, and, and, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if that's, you know, bid splitting, I, I, you know, looking at Anita there, I, I don't know, they're, they're each individual projects, but, you know, that, that is certainly something that needs to be considered.
Yeah.
Anita?
Again, all of that's going to depend upon the, the universe that your board creates in terms of what your plan is going to be, then how it's split out and compartmentalized. Some of those things are gonna be fine, maybe some others, but there's, won't be, but there's no problem in having a large overarching plan that's phased in. So, that's an alternative too. It really depends upon how your board wants to, to get started on this, and where you want to end up, and then all those niggly little details in the middle. But, once you have a plan, a lot of this will be easy to see in terms of how you, how you can at least have the alternatives to go forward.
So do I have consensus then, from the board, to have Lars go and run the numbers and, and come back with us for infrastructure?
So, yes, I, I have consensus on that, but I, I think what we need to do is have the space committee review some of this too, to, to go through it. I think that'd be the, the right process to go through, yeah. Yeah, and then bring back, then bring back a recommendation.
I agree, Rob.
Yeah.
Go through the space committee and...
Yeah.
Okay. I think that would be good.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lars.
Oh, did I take public comment? No, I did not, so public comment, please.
Sorry.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you, Brock Falkenburg, Lake County Superintendent of Schools, and I appreciate this discussion. School districts are dependent on the county treasurer, county auditor, controller, as well as IT for a lot of our business operations. I think the fire districts are in a similar boat, so there's probably many districts out there that are dependent on power to meet payroll, to meet our local accounts payable obligations, and that power has to be upstream here at the, the county level. At our office, we're making an investment of over a hundred thousand dollars in terms of permanent backup generation, and by July one, I can assure you that we will have temporary generation in place so that we're able to move forward. But we're looking at all the bottlenecks that may impact moving forward in terms of, of payroll and AP processing. So that being said, I, I want to be able to assure our school employees that they will receive a paycheck on time, and this is a critical situation, it's a unique situation. Hopefully, most of the expense is a one-time expense, so along those lines, I'd like to make sure that as a, the County Office of Education, that we're willing to step up and help offset some of those costs for the county to move forward, particularly in this building here.
Thank you, Brock.
Thank you, Brock. Can you help with the KPFZ tower, or is that, is that something?
Crystal Marketan, Director of Social Services. So, we also have had a company come out and do an assessment of our Anderson Ranch office. Our plan would be, if we were able to install a generator, would be to have most of our staff working out of that office, and those who are field-based, you know, continuing services in the field. My ultimate goal is to have staff continue to work. A lot of the programs, there are mandated portions of the programs that we provide. In addition, some, the benefits need to still go out, both for foster care payment and for people receiving aid and CalFresh. So, we, I really want to devise a plan that will work for both the public and for our staff. I also have an alternate, right now, I, I was trying to get the more specific information, but I will bring that back, but I think our all-in cost for the Anderson Ranch office is around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, but I will get more, you know, actual information to you on that. The other thing that I am interested in putting forward too is a revised plan for work to move forward in offices that are not powered, and I don't know if that is a possibility, but my staff have some really excellent ideas on how to do that. It would be voluntary, so that staff who are not interested in, you know, working in, under those conditions would not be forced to. So, those are my thoughts. My, the other thing with the PSPS that I have to mention is that I too am concerned that the community is, people who are interested, are hearing this and are preparing, but people who have few resources and do not have all, access to all forms of messaging, computers, cellphones, that kind of thing, are not hearing about this, and may not have the ability even to, financially, to prepare. And so, you know, just the food, you know, buying things that are non-perishable, really simple basics like that. So, we are also going to be notifying all the recipients of any of the programs that we deliver at Social Services, but it's just one part in really what needs to be a community-wide effort. So, I'll be back, I'm sure, on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Compliment that, the same contractor that evaluated the Social Services building at Anderson Marsh is the, the contractor that looked at, at this facility. I talked to him first thing this morning, and it's, may, may be new information to Crystal, and it validates effectively what she said, and I only add to that, that it's about the same size for, for that building as the smallest generator that would kinda do the bare bones here, and, and that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure jives with, with what, what we received.
Okay, thank you. Christopher?
I'm Christopher Veach, your county librarian, and, you know, I want us to do whatever we can to keep our libraries open, even when the power's out, but I understand also that we have to weigh the, the cost versus the benefit. But I am, I do wanna echo what Crystal said about continuing to stay open, or to have a plan for employees to work if there isn't power in their location. There are services that could still be provided, maybe for a short-term, and I'd really appreciate some guidelines or some direction from the board on what we should do if the power is out for a long period. Does that mean that we're automatically closed? Or can there be guidelines based on heat or light available to determine if we should close? I surveyed some libraries from around the state, many do have backup generation that they do use, others don't and remain open, and others don't, and they close immediately. So it, it really just depends on what the local community needs are. Thanks.
Thank you. I, I agree, I think we need to have some sort of guideline so people understand...
That was what I said earlier. Apparently, you know, somebody heard that, of course, they were on their phone at the time when I was talking about it, so, I, I agree, we gotta have some kind of a plan on that. But I did have one, one other thing to add to what Carolyn said. And I get that, you know, not everybody has access to information and computers and all this kinda stuff, we hear that from KPFZ, we hear it from everybody, but at some point, people have to reach out themselves and say, why is it our responsibility to reach out to everybody? If it's hot, you know the power's gonna get shut off, everybody knows, everybody gets a PG&E bill, they should've read it, they can contact PG&E, they can contact us, instead of us being responsible to reach out, or, and then, you know, the more we do for people, the more they expect us to do, then the more we're responsible if we don't do it. So, people have to, you know, figure it out. I mean, the government can't solve everybody's problem, we can't solve the heat, we can't solve, you know, we haven't always had air conditioning, we haven't always had stuff, you know, I mean, sometimes you roll the windows down, and I, I don't know, it's just like a, I know there's a lot of people, there's, there's kidney dialysis, there's all this stuff that needs to be plugged in, but those people, they need to reach out and try to figure out an alternative. It's not something that we can solve for every single person. So, I'm not, I'm not convinced that, that, that people aren't smart enough to figure it out, or at least figure out where that information is. And I think, instead of relying upon the government for everything, maybe they should call PG&E, that's where the problem is. Let PG&E figure it out for them, let PG&E send them to the right direction, or whatever. We don't, we don't have all the answers for everybody, and I don't think we should pretend that we do either, so.
Supervisor Simon?
Well, I will definitely agree. Obviously, people have been living in this area for fifteen thousand years, so I think we'll be fine without the power, but it is, the messaging out there is to get it out to the folks, to have a plan. I think that's the main thing, and we ain't gonna reach everybody, but it's to have a plan and an opportunity, and to make sure our employees here have an opportunity to know whether or not they're coming into work or not, and I think that's the ultimate plan we're looking at. The one concern I, I do have, just to talk about, is, is making sure that we're working with any of the property owners that we lease from, cuz we do have leases, right? We, I don't think, we don't own the, the Department of Social Services building down in Anderson, so if we're making improvement to a leased building, I wanna make sure we're talking to the owners, cuz that's an investment. So I wanna make, I know that complicates things for you, but I do...
Child support service is the same thing.
I do wanna bring it out, that, you know, we need to go to the owner, and maybe we can get, say, hey, you know, we're gonna install a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar generator, maybe we don't pay rent for two years if that covers the cost. You know, I don't know if that's even acceptable, but I know it's something we have to look at, because now you're improving a building that we don't own. So just one little thing, I know we wanna be, you know, cogn, I know we probably already are, but I'm bringing it up so community members watching everything, do that, to be cognizant of that, and make sure the buildings we do own are kinda on the high priority list, boom, get those things going. And I know, Crystal, it's, I know how important your department is, but that's something we need to consider when we're spending those tax dollars, so just wanna get it out there. And then ultimately, on the messaging, absolutely. Every message, I was in the Lorlick Days Parade, the Middletown, hey, have a plan, you know, have a plan, and most people do, it's just the, you know, the ones that, you know, there's still people out there that don't even know what it, what is going on.
Yeah.
And it amazes me, because we do a good job on messaging. I mean, there's been community meetings, it's on the radio all the time, it's on TV, just, we'll keep pushing that stuff. So Lars, I know you're in a tough position here, but we'll support you in whatever you bring back, and Rob, thank you for having this conversation today, that's what I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, it's specific to the leases. It is a county responsibility. I'll just add that the department heads oversee those leases. Buildings and grounds or, you know, public services typically doesn't get involved very much with, with those leases, but I will offer to any department head that wants some assistance on, you know, kind of wading through it, through that process, happy to, happy to help and, you know, add it to the list, if not ones that we manage, but at least for the sizings and scoping and maybe adding it to, potentially to, to the overall project. But, you know, it absolutely needs to be coordinated with, with the building owner.
Chair? Is there anything further before we move on?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lars. Susan or Anita, do you have any?
I think your board's made it clear that there's a lot of planning and work to do to come back to your board with some recommendations regarding short-term and long-term plans using solar, wind, and any other alternatives. If that sums it up, we'll get on it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I think we've completed everything except the extra item.
And we can do that real quick, or you want to take a break?
Do you want to take a break?
I don't need one. We can just do it real quick. I know Moke's got to hit the road.
If you don't need one, I think we're good. Okay, let's keep moving.
I'm going to try and get out of here by noon.
Yeah, okay. All right. I'm going to come down here with them, because I want to show you guys something on the power.
Okay. So, we're going to take up our extra item.
Did we get, did we do the bill?
We moved that to next week.
Oh, that's right. I even made the budget.
I think we did everything. No, keep me, keep me going, Mike, I'm sure. I do. Let me just have a close.
This one, we'll have enough copies of it to get to. Okay, so, thanks for hearing this, and thanks to staff for.
Michael.
Yeah.
You got Moke?
Yeah.
So, as with a lot of things that we do, good intentions sometime lead to panic. And so, we got, you know, we did the hazardous vegetation notice, and because of timing, it's the same thing with the benefit zone. We got right up to, we bumped right up to the timeline, and now we really can't make, you know, we can't have people out there cleaning, doing a lot of lot cleanup with lawn mowers and chainsaws and things like that. Weed eaters, that's one thing, but, or hand trimmers. But because of the conditions that we're already experiencing and the heavy fuel load from the, from all the rains that we had in the spring, pretty hazardous out there right now. And so, the letters, because of the timing, the letters just went out, and the, you know, the idea of the 21 days and all that is really good, but the timing of it is kind of, kind of bad, because now we're, these letters just went out to all the property owners this last week. And, and I knew they were going out, and I actually, for full disclosure, I got four of them for, for property. Let me see, I'm going to try to move this thing down, kind of move down just to show you as an example. Why don't you?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, wait a minute. You know what? Here's what we can do. Yeah, there you go. Okay, keep going to Bottle Rock Road. And for example, I'll show you my property, and I'll show you some of my neighbor's property around. Down, farther down. Yeah, there's Kelseyville. Keep going. Down in that. Right about here, Bottle Rock Road. Okay, so, this, this letter, so here's, here's one parcel that, that I have here that, where I got a letter. It's 160 acres. There's no, there's no neighbors. There's no houses or anything around, and I wouldn't know where to clean. If this was just somebody, some, and I'll show you another parcel up the road of a friend, my neighbor two rows up that also, he doesn't know what to do, and my phone was ringing off the hook from people that just don't know. Now, here's my, darn this thing. Here we go. Here's the closest neighbor to this property, right here. There's a property line, and it's, what is that scale right there? Is that 60 feet?
60 feet.
Okay, so there's 60 feet. So, I, we figured it was about 130 feet from, from the property line to their house. That's the only neighbor that we have, so I wouldn't know where to clean if it, you know, and given the fact that they don't care about what's near their, near their property. So, you know, I don't, I wouldn't know where to start on that. So, another, another property here. Going to figure this thing out before, yeah, right there, that, that parcel right there that, it's. Yeah, a little movement more, yeah. Okay, so, this, this parcel here, it's 27 acres there. There's no neighbors. There's no house anywhere near it, but it's on the list. This parcel here, there's the property line right there, and this is probably, probably 400 feet from there to there, so I wouldn't know where to clean on that. The neighbor that I was talking about up the road. Harder to see the property lines on this than, so his, his property is, oh, there's the property line right there. So, the property line right there, and he, his property's on the list, but there's no houses near it, so. But, so I think, I guess my point is, I'm asking that the board consider a resolution to work with staff. Let's just, let's just put a.
What was it? What was the term you used?
Just to defer, just to defer further action. Right now, the ordinance that your board adopted vests a great deal of discretionary authority in the local fire official. So, so a lot of this could fall within that, upon your board's direction to defer certain enforcement actions for a period of time, and your board can give that direction now. We can follow it up with a resolution for next week, or your board can simply give that direction now to community development and the local fire official as to how you want to proceed. And if you want to defer certain actions, then you simply need to say so.
And, and, you know, I want to emphasize that it's not because of, of an inconvenience as much, that's not the primary, I think, an inconvenience for property owners that really don't know where they should be cleaning. I'm more concerned about the guy who's going to get out there and start cleaning, because they call this Bottle Rock Road for a reason. There's nothing but obsidian out there. There will be a fire out here if somebody's out there with a bulldozer, chainsaw, you know, some kind of mower or anything like that, just panicked trying to clean because they're afraid they're going to get fined or penalized. And that's not what our intention is. Intention is to have it done thoughtfully at the right time of the year and not cause more problems by a well-intended vegetation ordinance. So, that's why I wanted to bring it back to the board, to see what, what direction, if any, the board wanted to take, and, and actually hear staff's recommendation too, because I think in the brief discussions that we've had, we're, we're all kind of being hit with this, and with everybody going, now what do I do? So, it's, the conditions are really bad out there to be cleaning. I don't have to tell you, you guys know. You get out there on the ground, that, that picture from, you know, 30,000 feet up is, is a matchhead that's, you know, 20 feet high. It's not, this is to clean it down to four inches and pruning of trees and shrubbery. This isn't, this isn't landscape in the garden. This is major, and, and I'll be honest with you, this is, to get to where we are with this fuel load has taken years of a lot of government regulations and legislation beyond us that have prevented people from maintaining it. It used to be maintained all the time. Used to be able to do stuff. Now you got, now you got grading ordinances, you've got, you know, water quality control board, you've got all these things. You can't clear brush, you can't do that. It's harder to burn liability-wise and air quality-wise. So, there are a lot of reasons it can be done, but it's got to be done in the wintertime when it's safe.
I thought, I was told that on one of these letters, or maybe it's on another piece of paper, it kind of explains how to go about the cleaning.
That form that you have right there?
Yeah. This went with it.
Okay, so there is something about telling about what time of day, what to use, what not to use, when not to do it.
Yeah, that's the LE 100 form. That's all.
Yeah, the LE 100 on the back.
Can you pass that up just so we can see it? Please? Thank you.
That's more about what we intend to see, LE 100 on the back. Has some standards and ideas as well.
So, would this kind of give them an idea too, if, if their property line is here? They have to do the same thing? Because I know we had talked about, we were having landowners, if they had, were next to improve parcels, but if they're not next to improve parcels, we weren't expecting them to do this, right?
With the exception of if that property was next to a roadway that would be used as an evacuation route.
So, they would have to just clear from the roadway then? So, maybe?
Well, clear from the right-of-way.
Yeah, the, the right-of-way is, is the county's responsibility, or the state, depending upon the property. But none of these are, that's not, that's not the.
But we did send one, for instance.
The case in, in any of those.
Well, one of them, there was a house next to it, and you were saying you wouldn't know where to clear, but this kind of gives you some sort of.
There's no house within 100, 100 feet, and so, again, you're taking the fact that I'm the landowner out of it, because there are other cases like that. Why should the landowner clear if, say that, say they're 80 feet close to the fence line? So, the property owner has to clean 20 feet around there, while the 80 feet between the property line and that person's house still has brush.
I thought we had some sort of numbers. Wasn't there, and, since I don't have the ordinance up in front of me, if you're, the house was, or, I know there was numbers if you were going to build, or a neighbor was going to build up to your property line. You'd have to clear. What, what was that dimension?
Starting with 30 feet up to 100 feet. Dead or dying vegetation, heavy fuel-loaded vegetation like our chaparral brushes, Scotch broom, that sort of thing, that are, that are real flammable. There were, for instance, along Highway 29 between Kids' Corner and Deener Road, some of those parcels, the brush comes all the way down to the road, and it's high, it's dense, you can't even see through it. And they were sent letters as well, because that needs to be.
Right by Manning Flat. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that in particular.
So, you need then to clear that, so the roadway would be clear if there is a fire?
If there is a fire, that's correct. Because that's what we saw at the campfire, was people, the roads were burning right, right up to the road, and you couldn't get through when it's burning on both sides. So, those did get sent, and that did not include improvement, other than a road improvement.
So, just, that's a, that's a good example, because that's a legitimate, I, I, not that, not that the property, the other properties I showed you weren't illegitimate. Maybe there's some areas in there that we're not seeing. We need to, we need to identify those, but that's a, that's clearly legitimate as far as access road. But do you really want somebody up there with a bulldozer and chainsaw right now cleaning it?
They, you know, there's still clearing going on with, with bulldozers, mechanical and masticators and.
In some areas, yeah.
In some areas, that sort of thing. If, you know, and, in a large area like that, we'd recommend a water truck, both for dust control as well as preliminary fire suppression.
And there's probably four of those in the county.
Yeah, and there may be more, but anyway.
They're not available just for this, though.
No, that's true.
Yeah, they're, they're on jobs.
And, and we knew this when the ordinance was passed, that we had a very short window, not just when the ordinance passed, but when it went into effect. So, we had two things happening there. And part of it was to put property owners on notice, and a lot of voluntary compliance has already occurred. I think we talked about that yesterday at the Risk Reduction Authority. People being made aware of what to do, and, and this would be one of the questions that I had as fire official, was at the end of this 15 days, do we just go out and recheck and then let the other property owners know that effective, at the end of fire season, whether that's September or December, that they need to go forward and get their property cleared as required, or we will step in?
I personally would like to see these people, they may not be able to do the work now, but have a plan in place.
Right.
Well, and that's fine. No, I agree with that. I just, I'm just worried that some people, I mean, I'm not going to go out there and clear. I'm not, there's no reason to, but, and, you know, a few of my neighbors, because there's no, it's, it's not a hazard to a house at all. But there are some that will, and that's what, that's what concerns me. I think a plan, you need to have a plan. They need to be, you know, all of us do, even if you don't have a, have a house, because if you got 300 acres, it's a, it's a fuel load, there's got to be something done with that, because it, you know, it's, it may, 100 feet is nothing. Fire will jump 1,000 feet, as we've seen, or more. It won't jump seven acres, though, or seven miles. I'm convinced that Kelseyville evacuation probably didn't need to happen, but, but yeah, it will happen in brush, you know, so that something has to, but not, not in the conditions that we have right now.
Have, have we received, have you received a lot of calls about people wanting clarification on what they're supposed to be doing? And then how do we go about that?
Ferdinand Gondofo, Code Enforcement Officer. He has been receiving several calls. If you could report on that, Ferdinand?
I've received several calls today. Today was my day in the office, and a lot of people are asking, you know, exactly what, what is to be done, and a lot of people want someone to actually to come there and show them what they, what should be done. And ideally, the whole essence is for awareness and to try to thin out thick areas and along the roadside and around the homes. And that's the main, main objective that I've been trying to put out.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. I understand why you brought it here, Rob. Obviously, there are people with concerns, but there's just as many folks that are happy for what's going on. They're calling in right now on their neighbors and other things that haven't acted for years. I agree with some type of long-term plan for the larger landowners, but we need to really get them signed on. I just, I don't want to give mixed messages out to the community, because the, it's in, they've got the letter, we want to get this stuff done. I know that I have constituents calling me this morning, because they have neighbors that aren't doing the right thing, you know? So, you know, we also have Hidden Valley that backs up to a lot of these big properties that haven't been cleared on the backside over there, which they're very concerned about, which they had homes burned during the Valley fire, and now they're looking at that stuff right out their back window, not being cleared by the large landowners. So, I think coming up with plans and stuff like that, I think this year are good. One thing I don't want to get everybody confused on, we go, hey, it's, we're putting this on hold, and then everybody quits cutting their grass, you know? And then that very well could happen, not.
You're right.
Unintentional consequences, just like's happening right now. So, I think rolling everything back, I wouldn't be in favor of. Now, coming up with some long-term plans and other stuff like that, I definitely support even our fire marshal and other folks to work with long-term individuals, because Rob had a great point. It's taken 50 years to get to this point, so it's not going to be cleaned up in one year. So, I understand that. But having a plan over the next two, three seasons on how you're accomplishing that with the larger landowners, I think is something I would definitely support. Just the messaging, that's a, I appreciate this, because we, there are folks that have jumped right on it. Even, you know, down in our area, I know that, you know, we're a large landowner now. We own 300 acres, so we're out there right now, we're, we're cutting all the grass, we're looking to get the dead trees down. We're doing everything that we can do to protect ourselves as much as possible, and I know some of these landowners are, they don't live here, they're just large landowners in Lake County, and so I think there's going to be a longer process to go through that, so.
The, the only thing I would ask, I mean, I'm, I get that, I totally get it. The thing that concerns me is people just going out there and just doing stuff, and they, they will.
You're always going to have the bad actors.
Well, it's not really a bad actor. They're scared. They're, they're like, oh crap, I don't want to get fined $400 a day or whatever it is, and so they're going to, they're going out there and doing this. If they're not bad actors, they're, they're told they need to do it, so they're trying to do it. And, and at the same time, their neighbor's not doing it, so you got, you know, the guy that's clearing his lot, got to have more concern for his neighbor's house than his neighbor has? You know, that's the other thing that's going on. I think what we need to do.
I guess I preference that with bad actor, a guy on a lawnmower at 130, 140 degrees. That's a bad actor.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, to know that they, you know, just getting the, the stuff cut down and chipped up, you know, instead of going all the way down to the ground, that's, that's a move forward. So, I think there's folks who are going to do it the right way, but, you know, that's what I mean when I mean bad actor, just using the no common sense, getting out there in the hottest days and starting those things, so.
Are we prepared to go out there, like you said, to have people go out there to say, hey, this is where you need to clear? This is what we meant? Because it doesn't really, you know, it's like, you look at the form, you figure it out, kind of thing, because, you know, I mean, you, you know, as a cannabis development department, I mean, community development department, you've got plenty to do, plenty to do as it is, so I, I don't know how you're going to find time to do that, but without having somebody go out there and put eyes on the ground and say, this is where you need to do, how is, how are people supposed to know?
Possibly prioritize the different parcels and come up with a plan.
Yeah.
It is our intent to go out on the properties where the letters were sent to. That's 417, and at the 21 days or thereabouts, we'll go back out, see if they've done anything or see if they've contacted us, because we are getting a lot of calls saying, what do we do? Because we are getting a lot of calls saying, what do we do? Can you meet us out there? That sort of thing.
Okay.
And the fact is, is yes, we do have time or we make time to go out and do that. We may not be towing the car in the neighborhood because of it, but again, it's priorities within our staffing.
Yeah.
So.
Because I know, I mean, here's the, here's the gauge that we should go by. When the county refuses to go out and clear roadways because of conditions, why would we expect someone else to do that? You know, and the county is, they're, you know, the road crew, Public Works, they, and Caltrans, they're really good. They've got water trucks, they've got all that stuff. But there are times they just won't do it and for, for that reason. So I think that should be one, one measurement that we use too.
I think one of the messages we need to get out there somehow is if you've received a letter, just let them know we want to work with you. I, I don't know how we could message that, but, you know, the county doesn't want to be punitive and we don't want to just go out and fine you. I think we, we made that comment over and over again.
Yeah.
That.
How you message that is exactly what I said earlier. It's up to them to contact us if they're contacting, you know, the department, the department can say, yeah, you know, we'll, we'll make arrangements to come out there and check it out, do whatever you got to do. I mean, today's, you know, supposed to get to 105 today.
Yeah, today would not be a good day.
If you would have started at 6 o'clock this morning, you may have gotten an hour or two in, but it's pretty dry out there. Really dry.
But I also, Mary Jane actually made some announcements about this subject at the, at the wildfire, Silver Rees Theater. There was some discussion about it as well. So it is getting put out there. And a lot of folks are interested in seeing that types, you know, going to these events. And so I think if we just stay consistent with it and, and she has stated, you know, they'll work with you and, you know, they'll meet with them and whoever needs, has an issue can, can address. As long as they're in contact with us, they're willing to work with them. It's kind of the message that I, that I gathered from those events, so.
So what would happen then if, if they don't contact you? What would be the next step then the county would, would do? So they are aware of what the process would be? So we would contact them again?
Yes.
So maybe.
After we went out and, and saw whether or not they did anything, the likelihood that they could do something without causing a bigger problem. And we may contact them and say, be aware that your property needs extensive clearing and this is not the time of year to do it. However, we're put, we will be revisiting you as soon as the fire danger has lowered to the point where you can begin the work and discuss your work plan with you. Something to that effect.
But that's, I mean, you're, that's 417 properties to go out and look at. Some of those properties are going to, you may get two or three a day there because every, it's big. You got to, you can't, looking at an aerial photo, that takes a second.
We did approximately over 1,500 to get to this point, so.
Yeah.
And that took about two weeks. But meeting, getting out and meeting and talking to the property owner takes more time. So it's just one of those things that we do have the, the APN list of them and we can tell those that are in both the, the CSA areas as well as those that are not, but that are close to.
Yeah.
The hills above Lucerne, some of those areas up there. Valley fire areas that have a lot of dead and downed trees, slash piles, that sort of thing. Maybe just get it cleared around those so that they're safe until they can be burned. You know, it, it, you can't give a blanket answer for.
Right.
The 400, everyone's different.
Yeah.
Some of it is just a matter of grass and you can get out there with a weed eater or use the goats or sheep. You know, I mean, there, there are ways they can accomplish this without using mechanical means if they want to get it done immediately.
And there are goats out. I know in South County, there are a few different properties that are using goats at this point. There are a bunch of different ways, you know. Like, like I said, my messaging, I think it's getting out there, but we also know, I, I know that we're getting calls, especially in town, people who haven't cut their properties yet, they're not going. And it's people who rebuilt their homes and it's like, my neighbor never cuts his grass. And so I really want to make sure we're following up on those. I know Anderson Spring, well, all the fire, valley, all the fire areas, the last eight we've had over the past four years is just, it's intense and we're going to get those calls. So I think just keeping the message consistent. I think with your opportunity of going out and re, making contact with folks who haven't made contact with us, I think are the most critical ones. Because I think everybody else who's going to make contact at least would be responsible enough to have a conversation on what they're doing over the next couple of years.
Are there a lot of absenteeers? Out of town addresses?
I seem to own that list.
There's quite a few, maybe about 20% or, or a little more than that.
Those are the ones who are going to have the problems with, I'll bet.
Well, either problems or just coordinating with them as well.
That's part of the problem, yeah. Yeah.
Another problem is the elderly and, and disabled. They have a hard time possibly getting out and cleaning some of their properties as well, so they're.
Well, I'm getting elderly, but I'm not disabled yet, so. Mine's the easiest one I can, mine's easy to do, to take care of, but I'm just using that as an example because I went, well, if I don't know, how am I expecting, you know, somebody else to, that's not here every Tuesday to know what's going on, so.
And I think we, we knew that was going to be a consequence, you know, obviously working on that with the Risk Reduction Authority, obviously it's going to take a year to get that going too. But we're slowly but working, we just did our budget the other day. But I know that some of the firewise communities have neighbors helping neighbors and there's opportunities there. So actually this list would help if someone says, hey, I just can't do it. I need a volunteer, I need someone to help us do that. We have an opportunity where we can reach out to the community and say, hey, listen, you know, have every football team, wrestling team, everything, they're looking for community hours and other stuff like that. There's always opportunities to get this taken care of and hopefully we can address those issues. But you guys would have to have the first contact and say, hey, you know, I need help in District 1 or District 5. Hey, we need these two properties for the elderly folks clean. So I think we're, you know, this letter helps with that and then, you know, so I know that's going to be a problem and we'll try and work on that as we go forward.
Well, I appreciate it. You know, I, I wasn't sure exactly what the outcome would be. I was looking at a lot of different things and I, I'm okay with it, knowing that we're, you know, that we're working with people. I just don't want people going out there getting crazy.
Yeah.
You know, with, you know, hiring contractors to come in and just start, start tearing stuff up without a plan, you know. And you guys know as well as I do, there's not enough people, not enough bulldozers, not enough water trucks, not enough, you know, chainsaws in this county, people to run them to get this done. So it's, it's not an easy task at all. It's going to take a long time.
You know, I think we knew that this was not going to be something that was going to be done this season. It's, it's a process and it's going to take time and then having to go back again and revisit that, you know.
And hopefully this not off subject, but when we pass the ordinance too, it's an opportunity maybe for an economic opportunity for folks out there. You know, especially if you don't have mini skills or anything, but if you're a business owner, it's going to be a great time to get into the brush clearing and the clearing business here to put folks to work that are looking, that have minimal skills, that can run a chainsaw or even a weed eater. It's a good business opportunity for somebody to look at this because it's much needed. So that, hopefully somebody will hear that and we can start a new economy to keeping ourselves safe here in Lake County. And, you know, so if we have that opportunity and working with everybody on this is definitely going to be a long-term task.
And with the letter, we sent out the list of contractors and businesses that do this. And prior to starting on this, I contacted Contractors License Board regarding whether